Okay, Council, you need to return to open if I can get a mover in a second or please move by Councilor Belinda Kiss to make this like by Councilor Peter Kiss to make it be resolved that count. The council, the corporation, the township, the quarantine does hereby return to open council at seven thirty six P M. Those in favor and that is carried, none opposed. Item number seven, business arising from the closed session. We do have one motion for. If I can get a mover in a second or for that motion moved by Councilor Peter Kiss to make your second by Councilor Belinda Kiss to maker.
So be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the township of Horn Pain does hereby set a special meeting of council for Wednesday, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at six P M. For the further discussion of a confidential staffing item.
And those and that is carried. And there's no further business arising from the full session at this time. Adoption of the minutes for the regular count meeting of council on June nineteenth. If I can get a mover in a second or please move by Councilor Belinda Kiss to make your second by Councilor Peter Kiss to make your be resolved that the council of corporation, the town. And that's hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council. Hold on Wednesday, June nineteenth, twenty twenty four as distributed. Any comment on those minutes? Wondering just from the June nineteenth minute, did I get an update of the immigration program? What's happened with that?
Yes, I can speak to that. Go ahead. There's actually an information only. The first item is the responsibility.
Yeah, I saw that.
And they find what we are within.
Okay, and when did you receive that letter?
It says it was after actually the deadline for this agenda, but I included it's community member Kat Recheck asking to update as well. So I wanted to cut out, but it came in either Thursday or Friday last.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Jen. Um. Uh, last year or last year, last uh, meeting on the nineteenth, we had asked the public works uh. Manager about the bylaw that we passed last year when securing properties that are apprehended for tax orders. Uh, specifically the property next to mine, um, what we can do to make that safe.
I'm still investigating it, so I'll have to come back to council at a upcoming meeting.
Okay. And uh, for the fire department's S B A units, did we? Did it, did we get them ordered and do we have a delivery date?
They're ordered, but uh, I'm not sure the delivery date. Yeah, I think it was September.
Yeah, they weren't sure in the name for September.
I think it's the fall, yeah.
Okay, um. Last meeting on the nineteenth two, we uh, had the um. Dates up for our centennial, which I think is great. I'm wondering if we can ask the uh, C E A committee. You make an a banner to replace the one on the C N building. Because it just looks horrible and have something with the, you know, coming like the come celebrate the hundredth anniversary. And if it's made the same exact size, because I'm sure there's some glitch under that thing.
Yeah, go ahead. So sorry, Mary, can you repeat? So I've replaced the banner on which location?
The C N building, there's the banner from the seventy fifth. And if we can replace it with a, you know, come join us for the hundredth anniversary on the dates that we've set out and. And those are all any comments and questions for minutes? Any further comments or minutes of our June the nineteenth? Okay, there being none, I put those to a vote, pass those in favor and that's carried, no opposed. Okay, moving on to the special meeting for July third, if I can get a mover in a second or please move by councillor Belinda Kiss to make second by councillor Peter Kiss to make a bit resolved with council corporation. One thing that hereby adopt the minutes of the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, July thirty twenty twenty four is distributed. Any comment to those minutes? There being none, I put those for both those in favor and that is carried. And the special meeting of council for July the eleventh, twenty twenty four. I can get a mover in a second or please move by councillor Peter Kiss to make your second by councillor Belinda Kiss to maker. Be it resolved that council, the corporation, the township, the foreign pain does hereby adopt the minutes of the special meeting of council held on Wednesday, July thirty twenty twenty four is distributed. Any comment on those minutes? I just had one question about that meeting was. I understand that it was a closed, completely enclosed, but why didn't we report it? Why was that decision made?
Because it would pretty much, we would go into open and then go right, like there was nothing really to record. It was just some minute of open.
Okay, and our procedure by law laws us.
Yes, yeah. And I can ask the deputy clerk to speak further on that item as well.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, as for the municipal act, we have to be uh. Have access to our open sessions that can be physically or virtually because we have. Council chambers, we now just live stream and report to complement. Our physical uh, attendance, but it is not.
Okay, perfect.
And uh, I have no further comments on that, council. Okay, I put those minutes to a vote, those in favor and that is carried. I did get the mover in a second, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and we want to uh, departmental report, if I can get a mover in a second or open before move by councillor Peter Kiss to make your second by councillor going to kiss to make or be resolved with council incorporation. The challenge for point pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the departmental reports provided at the regular unit council hold on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. And I need to add anything to.
I don't have anything further to add, but I can take any questions from council.
Yeah, open the door for questions in council. Councillor Belinda Kiss to me, go ahead.
I see you had a meeting. We had, um. Meeting on July the eleventh or the ball field, is that correct?
Uh, yes, we did, yes.
And how did that?
It's good, um. He's just working on. Um, he's working on the design, he's going to be working on it and they hope to. Complete everything by the summer, early fall.
Okay, so when you say that, is construction gonna happen?
It's, it's, yeah, I'll be starting this summer.
Okay, yeah, that's my main thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are still good and okay, I'm just kind of frustrating. Okay, and then I think there's something else. When this, the six socks circular, the textile, do you have to have a certain amount? Leave here all the time to keep it going or is it just?
It's just there and you can put in as much as you want, as little, there's no minimum.
Okay, that's good, thanks. And uh, the. Early, wow. Um, are we going to be? Um, I was just wondering, I guess we're gonna be discussing that later or, okay.
Well, just to answer or provide more information to councillor Belinda Kissmaker. The information's there and so there, there's a motion on the agenda.
Okay.
Somewhere later, just indicating that um. The township will move forward with replacing the shaft seal replacement in July, August versus instead of doing it. September, October, which is usually when the startup happens.
Okay.
Um, so it'll be an extra cost, perhaps four thousand to five thousand, maybe, maybe between three thousand to five thousand, but. Um, either way, if council approves it, then we'll go forward with that to, to make the, do the repair earlier essentially.
That was it for now, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Belinda. Peter?
I'm good with it, thank you.
I had the same question as Belinda about the kickoff for the ball field, so I'm glad to hear that's on schedule. And are we, I guess we'll get a further update in August of where it's at.
Mm-hmm.
And also with the H A As. Meeting had a kickoff on July tenth and.
Yeah, and that one went well as well. Um, they're going to come up for a site visit on July. Twenty, no, thirty first, I believe it is. So that will be with me, the public works manager and Aqua, and so they're getting started on that as well.
Okay, well, we have a timeline, could we get a timeline of the work that'll be accomplished uh, over the, like, when we can expect to report or?
They're, they're working on it right now. They're drafting that information for us.
Okay, so we'll get that information at council?
Uh, yeah, I can share the information once it's provided.
Okay. Do we know how long it'll be?
I don't have an indication. Uh, it should be sometime this month.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. Any further questions in council? There being none, we move on to the acting treasures. Is Richard with us? Yes, he is.
Good evening. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good, my camera seems to not be working. I don't know what's going on with that. I tried to uh, resolve that before we started, but I can hear you fine. Hoping you can hear me fine. Um, so I'll just carry on with the report. Um, seven pages of information, the first regarding the breathing apparatus. And the idea of uh, using, excuse me, using uh. Other funds that are sitting in deferred revenue and as you see from my report that uh, that the agreement specifically. Identifies what those funds are for. So the only other thing that I could come up with was reserve funds other than the long term uh, loan. Which was proposed in the, in the budget this year. Um, next item was the dump truck purchase. I think that information is straightforward. There is a motion. Uh, under resolutions later this evening. Um, I'll come back if there's any questions. The audit report, I just wanted council to know where that stands. Uh, we've been waiting for a while for the A R O information. Uh, I was told we would have it early this week. Um, I have not seen it yet. I will follow up on that. Uh, when I get home, I'm actually at a conference in Toronto right now. And I'll be home sometime late tomorrow. So if, uh, worst case scenario, I'll follow up on Friday. Um, and the, I've also did receive a phone call from the auditor today and missed that. But we're trying to push to make sure that we get the year end audit report and financial statements completed as soon as possible. So that we can also get any reporting done that is required. For the library and for the financial information returned to the province. And the next was the water rates. Um, that was an item that come forward. There is not, I don't believe there's a resolution for that tonight, but it's something that council needs to decide. If they want to make some adjustments to the water rates for all multi-use properties. Again, if there's questions, I'll try and address them. The uh, the capital projects that were in the budget for twenty twenty four. That required long-term uh, funding. Where on the next page, uh, page five of the report lists the items. And how much was to be financed through loan grants, reserves and donations. Um, just taking that a step further, um, yeah, so options for financing. Um, the first line, first item would be uh, through a bank loan. Um, I have kind of looked at this and run the idea by the C I B C uh, commercial manager. Uh, with the idea of. Borrowing the money and only repaying interest in year, the first year, twenty twenty five. There is a current uh, long-term loan with uh, Ontario Infrastructure. Um, I think it was termed um. Rolling stock borrowing, that, that matures in August of twenty twenty six. So my idea there was, could we uh, pay interest only the first year? Uh, and I've based that on the four percent interest rate, and this is just for discussion. So I've got. The manager, bank manager looking into this for me. The second year in twenty twenty six, when there is only one semi-annual payment to infrastructure Ontario, that means we could pay. Take that semi-annual payment and add it to what we were repaying on this loan. And then the following year and thereafter, we could take the whole forty five thousand plus um. And put that towards this long-term loan. What this would require is a one-time tax rate increase. Of approximately three percent and that would be to cover the interest or the amount of interest we would pay in twenty twenty five on this long-term loan. Um, the other, the next item was a line of credit. Um, I've confirmed with the, the bank that C I B C anyway. That they would not entertain a line of credit for this purchase, that normally lines of credit are for operating items only. Uh, capital purchases should be on a, on a long-term loan that is with a, a set repayment schedule. And I guess that the last item was, yeah, the, the bank manager suggested to me when I discussed this with him on the phone. Um, a capital loan uh, to pre, to establish a capital loan limit. Where that would uh, be set up and as capital purchases are made. Once approved, then the, we would simply call the bank and borrow that amount of money. And set up a repayment schedule over the life of the asset. So it's very similar to one. But the, the situation here would be, um, we've got quite a few long-term uh, assets. That we're looking at purchasing right now, this year in this budget. And some of them over a ten-year period up to a forty-year uh, lifespan. So the repayment schedule. To do it that way would be quite extensive in the first ten years and gradually diminish. Um, the other part that I did not get into a slide here, I was having some internet problems last week at home. Um, the large capital projects um, for next year, Fifth Avenue. And the water rehabilitation program. Um, the suggestion is, and I think a great idea to contact uh, Ontario Infrastructure. And set up a construction loan for those with the idea of then locking them in as a long-term loan once the projects are complete. So with that all in mind, um, let's just open it for any questions on any of the items in the uh, acting pressures report.
Okay, thank you, Richard. And we do have some questions, councillor Peter, go ahead.
Good evening, Richard.
Good evening.
Um. On the page five, uh, that I, I see. There's the uh, ball field for three ninety-two, two hundred, but then loans for two twenty.
Yes.
I understand we're taking the trillium off of it, so.
Yep.
The um, the dump truck and attachments budget shows two eighty-four, but yet the loan can be for an additional seventy-four thousand dollars. What was that? How did that work out?
If you go back to page uh, two in my report. That, that deals with the dump truck purchase and explaining why that loan is higher. And, and you'll see the bottom line says that the recommendation to council is to approve the purchase at three fifty-seven. So there was quite a bit of confusion, I guess, as to what was included, what wasn't included. When we obtained pricing for that unit at the time of doing budget. And so the best information that we could put together for a current quote. Is to get the chassis, the roller deck, the dump uh, truck body uh, totals three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That still leaves the township without the sander unit, which would be another sixty-seven. So this recommendation is to get the unit so it can be used for plowing and other purposes. And then the sander unit budgeted for in twenty twenty-five. So, yeah, even though the current twenty twenty-four budget included two hundred and eighty-four thousand. The pricing is now coming in at three hundred and fifty-seven. So we were trying to explain that and recommending to. Carry on with the three hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's why the larger amount under the loan column of that uh, schedule on page five.
Thank you.
Okay.
Belinda, go ahead. Um, I just wanted to ask about the pre-approved April loan limit.
Yes.
Would the payment always be, would we always know what the payment's gonna be with interest? Involved within the payment?
Yeah, what, that suggestion, as I said, came from the uh, the commercial bank manager. Um, and I think his idea was to simply make it a little more flexible for the township. So you would know that. You have the ability to simply call them up and say, you know, we're gonna buy this asset. And the useful life of that asset is fifteen years or twenty years. We need hundred fifty thousand, it's got a fifteen-year uh, life, so the repayment would automatically be ten thousand dollars a year. Plus interest, whatever the current rate of interest would be at that point in time. And as that loan got paid down, it would free up more of the limit for other capital purchases to automatically happen. So it would be simply a pre-approved limit. But the repayments would be based on the useful life of the. But the repayments would be based on the useful life of the asset and an interest rate at the current time. Does that explain?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think my, I think my concern would be with that, if it's always fluctuating. I don't know what you're saying, but would it, we end up being in trouble somewhere? When it comes to uh, budgeting?
Yeah, my concern would be, um, like with the assets that we want to uh, acquire in 2024. Uh, as you can see, there are four of them that are, have a useful life of 10 years. So that's gonna be, they're all smaller assets, so it's not a huge amount. I guess the larger items are the fifteen and the twenty-year, like the pumper tanker there is the largest item and at over a twenty-year period. So, you know, we're looking at thirty thousand dollars a year simply for the pumper tanker, plus the current interest rate when that loan would be drawn down. I just think the first idea of trying to lock all of these items in over a twenty-five-year period um, is a more, i- it is um, a better way to establish the loans for these assets. On a going-forward basis, it might be something that council could also entertain. Uh, once this is set up and established to have a, you know, for future purposes, uh, another loan limit for other capital.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Uh, yes, I do have a few questions, Richard. Going back up to. So if we were to secure the loan for the entire one point seven million and further funds came available because there's supposed to be fire department funds coming available that is gonna have some sort of application process from the government? Um, are we able to still apply for those and pay, will there be penalties if we pay off this debt or don't need it?
Um, very good question. That's one that I did not put to Will, the commercial bank manager. But uh, very good question. I think I should get the answer for you and I will send out an email to all of council with that information. Could we, could lots of uh, payments be made if that loan was established over a twenty-five-year period, just at, you know, during that, that period to reduce the, either the time pa- uh, the time period or the um, amount of the annual payments thereafter? That's, that's a very good question. Yeah.
We originally looked at trying to have some flexibility with our loan options with financing, financing options. That was one of the things that we were told was with the Ontario Infrastructure dollars. Once you set up those long-term loans, like the ones we have now, there's no option to pay them off because you pay uh, penalties.
Yes, I understand that too with, with Ontario Infrastructure, but the bank may be a little more flexible. Uh, with that idea, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we were hoping. So I love the pre-approved capital loan limit. Because if we had that and we set up a loan limit and we budgeted for it each year at the max amount, we could be putting those other monies into reserves, whenever we're not paying on the loan. Like there's a couple of options for that.
Yep. That's, that's a good point too. Yeah.
Depending if we, like, we can't increase taxes either, but if we do have further development in our community, we could use, utilize that way and set up council for success into the future.
Right, yeah. Uh, I like that idea. Yeah.
I do have deep concerns about the um, like six, six hundred and sixty-five thousand for a tanker pumper. Um, my concern is that we end up getting a loan and I know with other financing through the province, once you start something, you can't back. You, you, you can't apply. It makes you ineligible.
Oh, once, once you've uh, established a lo- um, a loan for it, you can't apply for other grants that might be available. Is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned. Like, are we going to, like, I, I have no problem. Like, we need the, the pumper, but when we know that there's going to be available funding coming open, I just would hate to tie ourselves and like that, like, six hundred, almost seven hundred thousand dollars is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of money.
We still have water and road infrastructure that needs to be done.
Right. Do, the, and I remember when we put the budget together, our problem was that um, the e- existing equipment has reached its maximum for insurance purposes. And if we were not able to show the insurance company that we had this in the budget, that we are going to replace the pumper, then um, we would have uh, ended up with severe insurance increases. So much per household, I believe, is what they had, was the information we had obtained. So we have it approved in the budget, and then there was still some discussion about trying to find out whether um, the province would put any pressure on insurance companies to waive the age restriction on equipment, because in some cases, you can have a twenty, twenty-five-year-old piece of equipment, but it's got very little miles and it's looked after, you know, to, to the maximum so that it's still very usable and, and reliable equipment. Um, I haven't heard anything further on that in, in my travels, maybe some member of council has. Uh, the other question I would have is, is there any indication of when other loans might become available for um, fire uh, department equipment?
Well, the indication was in the Ontario budget that was released at the end of March, was that there was supposed to be an apple, open application process coming for fire departments sometime this year. So my concern is if we've already budgeted for it, which we need, we know we need a tanker pumper, but should we be borrowing for it already when we haven't submitted an application?
Uh, and I agree completely with you. Um, I would say I, well, at this point in time, we have not ordered. I, I don't believe we have ordered the pumper. Uh, so there's still an opportunity to uh, apply for any other funding that could come available. Um, I just think that we shouldn't put it off terribly long. So maybe what we should do is try and find out when, you know, through the province, when uh, this application for fire equipment is going to become available and get on it right away. Um, I could make some phone calls on that.
And that would be fantastic.
I do understand this whole thing kind of hinges, like if we did have that flexibility within this, if we had a pre-affor- uh, pre-approved capital spending limit, then we could say we need to go ahead with, you know, the, the uh, self-contained breathing apparatus. We need to go ahead with the dump truck with some of these other items, but we're gonna delay borrowing the money for the pumper until it arrives. And I still think there's a good chance, even if we put it on order, that pumper may not arrive until twenty twenty-five, maybe even a little later. But let's find out about any open applications um, for fire equipment. And I'll also find out from Will, if we went with the, my suggestion of the one big loan over a twenty-five-year period, could that loan be drawn down as we need the funds? And I can explain to him simply the, the fact that the pumper has not yet been ordered in delivery, could be quite a while down the road. But some of these other projects need to go forward now. So we ne- may need of the one point seven, maybe we need, you know, five or six hundred thousand now, maybe we need another six hundred, you know, in six months. And, and the pumper could be itself next, sometime next spring, let's say, for example. So could that be drawn down at different times? And as it's drawn down at different times, then of course, the interest payment, if we start off with interest only, would be a lower amount starting in early twenty twenty-five. So I can, I'll follow up on that as well.
Yeah. Okay, cuz I do think we need to be making the relationships with the people that are financing and working in the department. Whoever it is that's going to be giving out those loans. Because the other thing is, is we need a fire truck too. And this is my concern, is that if we can get the, the financing for both the pumper and the fire truck, which is going to be close to two million with the two of them combined. And if our share is, you know, thirty percent, well, now instead of just getting a loan for a pumper truck and paying it outright, we're getting a loan for approximately the same amount, six hundred thousand, but we have a fire truck and a.
And a pumper, yeah.
Do you see, that's where, like, we need the fire truck too.
Yeah, okay. I will, I'll follow up on, on each of these items and try and get back to council. Um, before I leave, I, I, I don't know whether council is fully aware, but uh, my wife and I have a vacation booked on September, August the seventh, and we're gonna be away for three weeks. So I wanna try and deal with this, cuz I know I'm not gonna be in the country for your next council meeting in August. So I, I'm making notes on these things and I will respond directly to council.
Thank you, Richard. I do have a few other comments and I do understand the timeline, so I'm just putting it out there so that
Yep.
you uh, know where my, my mind is at on this.
Okay, absolutely. Go ahead.
Oh. Does um, you had mentioned that uh, the follow-up would be Friday for the audit report to find out when our audit? Are we late on our F I R?
Not yet. Well, I shouldn't say that. The, the original schedule is May thirty-first, is when they want everybody to have their F I R completed. Uh, when that doesn't happen, then they send out, uh, the province sends out another letter and it says, okay, the very final date is August thirty-first. And if it's not filed by August thirty-first, then the province will start withholding payments. So any payments coming for your uh, your, your uh, grants, not uh, not all of the uh, grant projects, but the uh, bear with me, I'm, I'm just getting back into things after being away from horn pain for a while here. The um, O M P F grant that comes quarterly, I believe it is, and, and that kind of money could start, they could start holding it back until they get the F I R uh, filed. So that's why I've kind of been pushing to get the final statement done, so that as soon as it's done, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, like next week, I'm gonna start drafting the F I R myself, so that uh, any, uh, there's quite a few schedules that I can go ahead and do and then just finalize it once the final statements are, are provided. The other threat, though, that we have, I shouldn't say threat, the other issue is the, there's a report that needs to go in for the library, uh, financial report. And I guess last year, I, I understand from the librarian that they were warned, they were so late getting that filed last year that if it continued to happen, that the um, charitable status of the library could be withdrawn. So again, we wanna go ahead, I've already talked to the auditor about that, about getting the in- financial information from them as far as the final uh, report. And I could simply take it from the um, the trial balance that we have for the uh, library, but I wanna make sure that they don't have any adjustments that they think should be made. Um, and I'll put that together and get it filed as soon as possible. So I hope to have it done before the end of the month.
Okay, and um, the calculations that are be- being completed by the asset management coordinator is expected to be completed early next week. Was that um, this week?
Yes.
Because this report was written last week?
Yeah.
So do you know if you're in and done?
No, I, it, I got the, the uh, email from um, the lady at Wawa last Friday, saying she was gonna work out on it over the weekend and hope to have it to us early this week. So I've passed that information on to the auditor, and that's what I said, I have not seen an email come in yet. Um, for that, uh, now she has my home email, so I assume she would send it there. As I said, I'm away, so I'm not checking the treasurer's emails today, tomorrow, but I will follow up on Friday and see if she has it completed, so that we can get that off to the auditors. So it should be this week, though, not, not next.
Okay. Can we double-check our contract with this uh, asset management coordinator to make sure that it's in there? Uh, or that we, we get the expectations of any reporting done ahead of time, so this doesn't happen to us next year?
I'm pretty sure it's under agreement.
Okay, and then we should be following up as soon as they're late, because this is good for our municipality. I, in, and I'm all a supporter of shared services, but uh, it's concerning to me.
Yeah.
Um, just the project updates for the water rates.
Yes.
When um, we had our uh, water rates discussion, as did the comprehensive uh, study on it, we had a discussion about the multi-unit residential water rates, because we're trying to get um, apartment buildings built in our community.
Okay.
And I'm not sure what, um, I think, I think this needs to come back to council, because currently I, and I, I'm just going by memory of what was dis- discussed, but I thought we had gotten information from other municipalities of what they charge their apartments. And it wasn't a full, because I remember us talking about an eight-unit. And we didn't have any eight-unit apartments in our um, municipality at that time. So I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we set a multi-unit residential water rate. Or I'm not sure what the minimum was during those discussions. I can go back and.
In our tables.
Yeah, it's in the tables, but they're saying that that doesn't apply.
Why, why?
I'm not sure.
If.
Is that a past report you're referring to?
This isn't it. This is the one that's on the Horn Pain website. They packed back in February, apparently.
Yeah, so I'm not understanding why the uh, increase was, but anyway, it needs to be addressed, because we have investors that have been looking at building apartments and looking at what uh, would be available. And, and I sent the letter about, from the H H C and the discussions happening there. There's no way you can uh, uh, provide affordable housing. Like, that's the, that's the benefit of having a multi-unit structure at a certain rate, that it's, there's a benefit to that. So, did you wanna speak, Eileen, sorry?
Uh, I, I just wanted to, um, I guess remind council that there was confidential memo sent regarding the rates um, last year in January, which I believe council was also sent it this year as a reminder, but um, I can also send it again to council, should they. Sure.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, cuz this is what is on the website.
That's gonna be a toward email, Eileen.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Eileen, do you recall in that or uh, a record of checking other municipalities as to what the multi-unit rates were and make some kind a comparison to a single house, single-family dwelling versus a multi-unit rates in other municipalities? Do you know if that comparison was done, uh, Eileen?
I'm not sure. It m- might have been done by the treasurer, but I, I don't have that information.
Again, I will do a little searching in um, the, the treasurer's uh, reports and, and storage information, I guess, to see if that comparison was done and, and if we've got that information that we can make the comparison to what we're charging versus, and let's say some neighboring municipalities, and if not, maybe we can reach out and try and get that information.
Yes, I believe the um, you can follow up with Eileen, Richard, about uh, the consultants who did the work, but I believe it was Watson.
Uh, yes, okay.
Consultants that did the water rate study.
It was.
And it was during that study and discussion that we had uh, at length, because we discussed the uh, hotel rates and how to um, attract investment. It was quite lengthy discussions we had had.
Yep, okay.
And I'm not sure if in the finalizing of our uh, bylaw of our rates that we, it was missed and, or not incorporated properly, I'm not sure, but it does need to be revisited.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can. Yeah, I'll I'll see what I can find and again, report back to council on that.
Thank you. I'm just looking here. Okay, that's all of my questions. Thank you, Richard. Any further questions from council for the treasurer? Okay, there's no further uh, questions, Richard. Thank you for that and I look forward to hearing back.
Okay, great. I'll be here uh, listening for the rest of the council meeting. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Richard. Okay.
Okay, moving on to the public works manager's report. Any questions for our public works manager? I don't see any questions at this time, and I don't have any, except the one that I mentioned earlier from the uh, minutes, uh, the business arising from the minutes. Well, that uh, bylaw that we passed to securing unsafe property.
Yeah, and that will be coming back to council.
Okay, and uh, moving on to the economic development officers' report. Any questions for Stacy? Okay, I'm not seeing any and I don't have any, so thank you, Stacy. Okay, we'll put all of those reports to uh, to a vote to acknowledge receipt those in favor, and that is carried, none opposed. Hey, action item is eleven point one. And um, we just had some discussion about this council for the per the apartments water rates.
So you're saying the water rates doubled?
Yeah.
Per unit?
Uh, yeah, we got a um, the bill doubled in one, one bill payment. So I had a few, I have a few concerns about that just from mayor point of view.
Yep.
Is that substantial increase for anybody?
Yeah.
And not knowing about it, a lack of communication and not understanding it and no outreach to um, say it was happening.
Yeah.
And thankfully, we had just within our own uh, accounting at the H H C had prepaid a payment, so we were, uh, it wasn't as devastating. But like, I couldn't imagine us having a landlord in our community and that happening to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So um, yeah, so it needs to be looked at. And my concern, my biggest concern is uh, too bold, is we're trying to get investors to come to Horn Pain and we have to make it affordable for them to own the properties. That uh, and and when you look at a substantial investment of, you know, something like the hotel and what they're bringing to our community in economics and that sort of uh, the whole range of areas for social capital, economic cap, uh, economics that it brings, the people it brings. And there should be some benefit to building and investing in your community like that. And when you still have the same water, like I had suggested that other times, even during our water rate study, is do we put in water meters for our businesses? So that we can, you know, man um, have further data. I'm not sure the answer, but this is definitely not the answer. So, and I know in the past, when we didn't own the apartments under the H H C, the H E D C had come to council table and asked for um, you know, that was part of the the shut off and the closing when one apartment wasn't rented, you could not have to pay that if you put it in before the end of the month.
Right.
And um, and our other um, that is still currently in the bylaw. And our, all our apartment owners can do that, so that they're not paying when there's no one living in the apartment. Um, but anyway, I just uh, that's the concerns we have there and literally the per few apartments will be unsustainable.
Yeah.
I'll tell you that right now. And I want to just applaud too, that what's the work that's been happening. The uh, all the doors were upgraded, there's locks to the building now, there's been cameras installed. The uh, changeover for apartments are down to one month. The new flooring has been putting in, uh, we did a condition segment on the entire building. There's um, uh, windows being replaced. Uh, tubs and vanities, countertops, all of that's being replaced. So there's lots of work happening at the per few apartments and I want it to continue to happen, but we need to be able to have some dollars to reinvest in that, so.
And like, how is the per the apartments compared to say, uh, the apartments up by, like say, political apartments? Is it the same per unit or is it a different price?
Uh, currently, that's what we're trying to understand with the mu- multi-residential water rates. Because my understanding was when we discussed it, there was a certain number of units you had to have to get the multi-unit residential rate.
Right.
And I ate stuck in my mind that it was somewhere around eight. After that, the other municipalities had different rates for it, but I honestly do not know. But like all of that discussion, I would have to go back and look at our meetings and reread that report for the that was done for us. So I'm not sure, we don't have a motion here. I think uh,
I I didn't. Have to say something. I think it's more to do with, when I went looking for this, it was, okay, why aren't we use? What, why isn't this not supposed to be looking at? Because it's got multi-residential, it's got hotel, it's got everything for total. So if this is on our website, people are going to it and they're making their budget supporting to it, there's a, there's a problem, you know, when they're looking into dealing with this within our community.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I just want to speak to, like, in reference to just the H H C, H H C water rates. Like, there, that memo that was sent last year and this year again, um, that explains why those rates aren't being used. So that memo will clarify things for council again, but those rates are for the public, right? Like, but there's separate, there's different.
Shouldn't we all be the same?
Again, the memo kind of clarifies why.
Okay.
Yeah.
My thing is, we should be the same, anyway.
But I do think there's uh, so currently within our water rates, by that structure, we don't have a multi-use residential rate for apartments at a certain number, at a certain minimum number that allows for a different rate.
I'm not sure for the other, like, I'd have to look into it.
Okay, so that's what we need to look into. We need to understand what the residential, multi-use residential, what uh, what is comparison to the other municipalities? I think this work was already done with our study, our water rate study. And um, and then we'd have to bring back the this or add the multi-use uh, rate study to it, or sorry, the top rate study. The add the multi-use residential rate to our, or rates. Is that, hey, that works to understand what each one is?
Well, we'll have, yeah. Have to.
Yeah, and then we should, it should clarify right in the um, the bylaw with our definitions. Because even in the definitions, it doesn't make, it's not clear, because then you go back to because it's multi-use residential, and then it doesn't fit the apartment building. So it doesn't, definitely needs to be clarified.
And.
Okay, so we'll bring that back to a future meeting. Do I need a re- motion for that?
Oh, you do, yeah.
Okay. A motion to defer? Uh, okay. Okay, uh, so the item is eleven point one. If I can get a mover and a seconder to defer. Move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby defer item eleven point one to the next available meeting. Those in favor? Just a, uh, that's carried, then opposed. Just a final question on that. Do we need anything further? Because when the information comes back, is it going to be just this letter again? Or will it be the other information?
It'll be additional, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have to add that to this, okay. Okay, eleven point two, Terry Fox donation request. I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas the Terry Fox run, a run to raise money for cancer research has become an annual fall tradition. And whereas council received a request to support the twenty twenty four Terry Fox run to assist in raising research dollars that will make a tremendous impact in the fight against this dreaded disease that has touched many of our lives. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township, Horn Pain does hereby approve the use of the pavilion, including electrical access, six tables and ten chairs at no cost. Be it further resolved that council does hereby donate a prescribed amount to the twenty twenty four Terry Fox run. Be it finally resolved that council does hereby agree to team up for Terry by registering the Town Trotters, a municipal team, and the Terry Fox Run scheduled Sunday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Discussion on the motion. My first question is, what had we donated in the past?
Uh, we only started donating in twenty twenty two and that was five hundred dollars and there wasn't a run in twenty twenty three.
And do you have the funds for five hundred this year?
Yes.
Yes, we do?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion, council? Yeah?
Yeah.
I would like to see the donation. We have the funds to donate. I think it's great that someone has uh, picked up the mantle on this and continuing it. It was a um, just an amazing turnout, the hats off to a managerial for the years that she ran it. So I would like to support hands down this initiative. Okay, so I've inserted the donation amount of five hundred dollars and into the motion as read. Those in favor? And that is carried. Hey, eleven point three is the Via Rail Hack Club collaboration. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas Hack Club is a nonprofit organization founded in twenty fourteen by Zach Latta, dedicated to fostering creativity, innovation and technical skill development among students in over four hundred high schools worldwide. Whereas Hack Club provides an inclusive and supportive community where students can explore coding, software development and entrepreneurship in a left of environment. And whereas Hack Club empowers students from diverse bright backgrounds to build projects, develop leadership skills and pursue their passion for technology. And whereas Hack Club offers valuable resources, mentorships and opportunities for students to gain hands-on experience in technology, preparing them for future careers and educational pursuits. And whereas Hack Club promotes accessibility and equity in tech education, striving to break down barriers and ensure, ensure all students have an op- the opportunity to learn and grow in the field of technology. And whereas Hack Club, in collaboration with Via Rail, will be bringing fifty young innovative co- on a cross-country train adventure from Vancouver to Montreal with a stop in Horn Pain on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. To highlight the importance of environmental stewardship, youth innovation, rail travel and engage in hands-on projects and workshop workshops focused on sustainability, ecological science and finding innovative solutions to environmental challenges. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain fully supports the mission and activities of the Hack Club, Hack Club and recognizes the invaluable contribution it makes to the educational and personal development of high school students worldwide. Be it further resolved that members of council and staff are encouraged to greet and visit the Hack Club young leaders during their stop at the Horn Pain train station on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at five forty five P M. Be it further resolved that council encourages collaboration with Hack Club to expand access to technology, education, find innovative solutions to environmental challenges and inspire the next generation of innovative innovators and leaders. Be it finally resolved that this motion will be forwarded to Hack Club to express the township's endorsement and solidarity with their mission, with a copy to, copy to the honorable Randy Guazano, Minister of Employment, Workforce Development and Official Languages, the honorable Francois Philippe Champagne, Minister of Innovation, Science and Industry, the honorable Stephen Gilbo, Minister of Environment and Climate Change, and honorable Mercy Lang, Minister for Women and Gender Equality and Youth, and the honorable Jenna Suds, Minister of Families, Children and Social Development, Carol Hughes, M P for Elgoma Manitou and Cap Spacing and the Federal Federation of Canadian Municipalities, U C M and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario A M O. Any discussion on the motion? I would just like to have the exclusion of just one word. And it's in the uh, first, therefore it be resolved, if we could just exclude fully. I think it's just the township supports the mission. Is council go with that? I'm just not, I'm just, we're in support of this, they're coming through our community and uh, I think that. Any further, is uh, first consensus on the exclusion of fully? You're good. Belinda, are you okay with that? Yes, okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, there being that, I put that to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried, none opposed. Hey, eleven point four is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario A M O and the Ontario Medical Association, O M A, physician shortage. If I can get a mover and a seconder, move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas the state of healthcare in Ontario has been in crisis with two point three million Ontarios lack, Ontarians lacking access to a family doctor, emergency room closures across the province, patients being de-rostered and forty percent of family doctors considering retirement over the next five years. And whereas it has become increasingly challenging to attract and retain an adequate healthcare workforce throughout the health sector across Ontario. And whereas the Northern Ontario School of Medicine University says communities in Northern Ontario are short more than three hundred and fifty physicians, including more than two hundred family doctors, and half of the physicians working in Northern Ontario expected to retire in the next five years. And whereas Ontario municipal governments play an integral role in the healthcare system through responsibilities in public health and long-term care and paramedicine. And whereas the percentage of family physicians practicing comprehensive family medicine has declined from seventy seven percent in two thousand and eight to sixty five percent in twenty twenty two. And whereas per capita healthcare spending in Ontario is the lowest of all provinces in Canada. And whereas a robust workforce developed through a provincial sector-wide health human resources strategy would significantly improve access to health services across the province. Therefore, be it resolved that council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby urge the province of Ontario to recognize the physician shortage in Horn Pain in Ontario, to fund healthcare appropriately and ensure every Ontarian uh, has access to physician care. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health and the Honor, Ontario Medical Association, O M A, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario A M O. Any discussion on that motion? I do have one change of wording, just to uh, strengthen the motion. I think we should have it to uh, recognize the physician shortage in Elgoma in Ontario. Just because if they did some research into Horn Pain, they would probably tell us we're better off than most.
Right.
And if uh, council is in agreement with that change, just changing Horn Pain out for Elgoma. Okay, Belinda, you're good with that change?
Fine.
And I put that motion, any further comments from council? Okay, I put that motion to a vote, those in favor, and that is carried. Hey, twelve is information only. I need a mover and a seconder, please. Move by councillor, Belinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain, this hereby acknowledged receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting council held on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Hey, any discussion on the information only package? Go ahead, Eileen.
I have a, three items I'd like to bring to council's attention. Um, the first one is twelve point two, the response from the I R C C, which Jen alluded to earlier. It's just uh, just a letter just indicating that that I think we will be included under the Frank Phone application.
Under.
Yes, yeah. At twelve point five is the, um, E M O engagement on proposed modernization of the Emergency Management and Civil Protection Act. Um, the council and, uh, council and public can participate in the discussion and can submit uh, via email by August twenty-sixth, uh, should they wish to. And then the last one is twelve point seven, uh, which is the um, M and R proposal regarding developing a commercial scale framework for geologic carbon storage. Um, this is, and again, you can submit for comment and the comment period is open July ninth to August twenty-third. And essentially, M and R is seeking feedback on the development of legislative and regulatory framework for commercial scale geol- geologic carbon storage. Um, and those attachments that the backgrounder provides more details, and, um, that's pretty much it for the information only.
Any other discussion items from council? In that package? Okay, there being none, I put, uh, it to a vote to acknowledge receipt. Those in favor? That is carried, none opposed. Item number thirteen, thirteen point one, Thunder Bay Municipal League Board Meeting Minutes. If I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the minutes from the Thunder Bay District Municipal League Board Meeting held on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Any, uh, discussion on those minutes? I think you've already provided us updates of everything discussed in there.
Yeah, like I don't remember this is Farbach.
Yeah. Okay, I have no questions, Peter?
No.
Okay, those in favor? That is carried, none opposed. Okay, three point two is council committee updates. I'll start with Peter.
Um, I'd just like to comment on, uh, the tour of the fire department and I really enjoyed it. Thanks to, uh, Miles and all the guys and girls that, you know, show us around. But it really, really, really put a spotlight on. We're in dire need of a lot of equipment and we have people putting their lives at risk for us and we're not anything for them in return because of lack of resources obviously in our part. But we should, and I know this is not an overnight, this is a long-term project, but we should start getting some kind of ideas, ideas together. We need a new sits and dire streets. I had no idea. We were told about it, but when you actually see it firsthand, I'm like, wow. Now you're gonna put another new pump in there. There's, there will not be room for anything. You won't even build a store your equipment efficiently.
Do we want to make an addition to our special meeting on next Wednesday? And have a discussion about the fire department? Because if we're gonna be looking at the application process of what we need to include?
Yep.
That might give, uh, the treasurer some, um, guidance when they're looking at those funds. Because if we have to pay a percentage and we're already looking at a loan for eight hundred thousand, I'd rather that be a percentage of a bigger a bigger project.
It's just, yeah, I wouldn't even know where to begin to look at where you could build even something new, how you were able to even afford it such a thing, but we don't look, we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
App start somewhere because our fire, like, on Saturday, for instance, there was all these, the guys wanted to be at the, the big shindig that was going on and they dedicated their entire day and evening. And then the next day, and I could speak to a friend of mine, uh, Steve Trombley, he showed up to work on time Monday morning, but he was a walking zombie because he was basically up for thirty hours fighting the fire that had no doing of our, of horn pain. But he still did it, as along with everybody else.
Yeah.
And I'm, I tell you, I'm proud of what we have for Fire Department.
I am too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so what do we do to add that to our special meeting? Do we need to pass anything further or adjust the motion?
No.
No.
No? Okay.
As long as it's within the agenda, we're fine.
Okay. Okay, let's add that to the agenda then when it's published. Okay, that's all. Thank you, Peter. Uh, Belinda?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I do have, uh, one I got, uh, the staff to print out. So you received this in your email today. It's the A M O education. It's two one-day courses. And one is, uh, strategic thinking, planning, and leading. It's on September twenty-fifth. The other one is community engagement strategic approach. And that is October second. I just wanted to highlight those for council. I think they would be a great, um, benefit to everyone. If, uh, you have the opportunity to take them. And could we reach out to A M O and see if they are able to offer these courses in a webinar format so people that work and take them at their leisure?
Okay.
Because we have more like I understand that a lot of communities down south have paid council people that were full-time for their councils, but in Northern Ontario, we don't. And it might be a good benefit. Um, just some, my. So the, uh, Hack Club, that was, uh, Via Rail reached out to me and, uh, we had a meeting about that. They sent the information. I thought it would be good to have it on our agenda. That's how it came about. This wasn't any of us looking for this. They reached out to us as horn pain. Hopefully the train's on time and it comes in on time and we can meet these young folks. Um, I did think it was supportive because we've sat at this, uh, table before and talked about the via running on time and having that for our community. So this is one area. If it doesn't run on time, we can highlight it that way. If it does run on time, we can highlight it that. Um, Simco's we have. I did have a follow-up meeting with, uh, Simco, so that was, uh, you saw it, Eileen's report. They're the ones working with our curling club, fixing our curling club. They do, uh, do read refurbishments to plants. So I did have a meeting with, uh, Eileen Dwayne. We inter- uh, introduced them to Jordan that works at that level. And, um, sent the information back to Eileen. I think it's gonna come on our August meeting possibly.
Possibly, yeah, I still have to look into it.
Okay, um, basically what we had discussed at that meeting was that, um, before we can get any of these dollars, we have to do a, uh, feasibility study. They do it. And, um, it's better when our plant is running to do that. Uh, F C M does provide funding for that. There's an application process and Simco can do the entire application process for us. And with, uh, no charge to that, and, uh, Eileen will bring that information back. So it is about a six-month window. And they, but they don't have to start any of the work until, um, the application has been approved. So that'll come back. And we have been meeting regular at the Housing Hornpein Housing Corporation. We have another meeting on the twenty-ninth of the month. Uh, we will be providing our annual report to the, to council as soon as we get the audit. So we'll have that. We're just waiting for that. I am going to be involved with, uh, a preliminary discussion on the rule and northern fixed allocations for the O N E P. So this is talking about the immigration program and apparently Ontario has opened up a new portal. I'm not sure exactly how it's working, a new program. So maybe some of our newcomers that are having difficulty getting permanent residency through the R N E P might be able to go through that program. Um, we, I'm meeting for that meeting on the twenty fifth. So that's not going away. And that's it for right now for council. And I did, uh, you'll see my F C M. Okay, no further updates. We'll move on to conferences. Item four, fourteen point one is councillor Stefanik's, um, non-conference update. I was, uh, going to suggest to council that we defer this because, uh, councillor Stefanik is not here this evening to ask any, or respond to any questions. So if council is, uh, in agreement, we'll defer fourteen point one. If I can get a mover in a second or for the defer, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be resolved that council does hereby defer item number fourteen point one to the next available meeting. Those in favor? And that is carried. Fourteen point two is the F C M report myself. If I can get a mover in a second or move by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Be resolved that council does hereby receive Mayor Ford's report on the Federation of Canadian Municipalities of C M Conference twenty twenty-four. Any questions on the F C M conference? Go ahead.
The heating systems are with the new seat homes where they are they looking at different technologies like the heat pumps now? Is it all still basically?
Yep, I'm just here fossil fuels. They do have some, uh, recapture systems and solar. They can, because they are looking at providing for off-the-grid living, so they do have.
Go ahead. One of my apologies, I forgot to add something under committees and it was just about, um, the library board. There's a vacancy. There was a resignation, um, from the library board, and so there is an open vacancy if uh, it's been posted for a few weeks now. Um, so if council wants to spread the word on that, and sorry about that, I totally missed that on my end.
So library board member vacancy?
Yes.
And they apply?
It's, it's on our website.
On our website? And the application's there or is it a portal or?
It, they can just search just like how you would for a job posting. They can just put in, um, board or committee, I believe it is, and then it should go pop up.
Okay. And if they have any trouble, they can call the town hall or the library?
Yeah, they can call the town hall.
Town hall?
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions on, uh, F C M? Okay, just one note that F C M is in Ottawa next year. So, uh, and the other note that I want to, um, highlight is, I highlighted in the report, is their, um, growth strategy. It's the municipal growth. It's redefining our future, the urgent need for a municipal growth framework. I just thought this was really interesting that the Federation of Canadian Municipalities is moving in this direction and now has created a report and we have it on our strategic plan. Have a growth plan for our small communities. So I think we're still on target where the other, um, if you wanna call it the atmosphere of what's happening in other municipalities, especially small ones, where they're moving towards. So I think we could get support to try and have that developed for our community through F C M. And, uh, that's it. No further questions? But that, uh, receive the report to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. A new and other business is the Canadian Imperial Bank Commerce inactive savings account. Mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Belinda Kissamaker, second by councillor Peter Kissamaker. Whereas the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce, C I B C, has advised staff that the township owns a savings account with a balance of thirteen thousand, seven and thirty-five dollars and thirty-five cents that has been inactive for at least the past six months. And whereas the acting treasurer has not found any reason for these funds need to be kept separate in a saving, in this savings account where interest was paid at approximately one point five percent in twenty twenty-three. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpein does hereby authorize that the remaining funds from this account be transferred to the township's current C I B C operating account and that the savings account be closed. Any discussion on the motion? I do have, uh, are these funds allocated, um, to one of our reserves? Like, is this the hot dog fund or?
No.
What it was from the past?
Oh, oh, Richard, you're there. We can see you now.
Yeah, I switched, switched to my phone. Um, I did a search and I couldn't find any specific reason that these funds are sitting separate in a savings account. Uh, it does not, um, tie to any reserve fund that I could see.
Okay, so then therefore they're unallocated funds too from our budget? Were they included in our budget amounts?
Uh, no, it, it's an asset that is there, so money for some reason that was set aside at some point into a savings account. But, um, I don't know how long ago and I couldn't find any, anything, um, in the records that would indicate why it should be separate.
Okay, did we ask, um, when the bank account was opened? Maybe that'll give us a hint to what year this was done?
I, I did not. I can follow up again maybe with the, uh, C I B C, uh, commercial manager and ask that question. Um, I, I think there's, uh, that's one thing that I would recommend. I think we, the township needs a review of all of the savings and, uh, separate accounts and investments to determine whether there is a, uh, a real need to have that money sitting in a separate account. Um, if there's a record of it being for trust or for, for liability, uh, I'm sorry, for reserve purposes, um, I, I don't see any reason that it can't still be part of the regular bank account as long as the reserve amount is set aside, you know, and I, and identified. But, uh, there's other amounts and other investments that I think should be reviewed possibly this fall as well.
Okay, I think council will welcome that. We've been, um, discussing over the past course of the year, just to ensure that we can make solid decision and healthy decisions for our capital spending. So we definitely would like that. Um, and I know with other boards that I sit on, we have revolving G I Cs and investments that come open annually, so you always have cash flow that's coming open if you do need it. Are we able to incorporate some of that?
Uh, we could, absolutely. Um, keep in mind, by moving this money from a savings account into the norm of the general account, that is not creating a revenue for the township that, that those funds could be spent somewhere else. It's just two separate accounts. Uh, one's a savings account, one's the checking account. No additional revenue for the township by moving this over. It's just combining it where, uh, the township already gets, uh, a decent interest rate. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but on, on surplus funds as they sit in the, the general account. So, uh, to me, there's no, no reason to have that money separated. And I think there's some other accounts that we will look at this fall as well.
Okay, we look forward to that report coming and how we can simplify and min- minimize any kind of, uh, fees we're probably paying as well to hold these accounts.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, uh, that was my question for that. If I can, uh, get a mover in a second or and put on the floor, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Did I already, sorry, get a second or?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that. As I went to read it again, I'm like, I think I already read this. That's what happens when it gets to be nine o'clock. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? There being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Curling club part repair, if I can get a mover. Please, moved by councillor Peter Kissamaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissamaker. Whereas at the regular meeting held on March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, council received a deputation from the curling club and has subs- uh, subsequently, I cannot speak now, discuss the potential of having Simco install the shaft seal replacement for the curling plant in the summer months rather than during uh, plant startup in the fall. Whereas this could be proa- a proactive step to help mitigate potential complications with the repair of, or further issues, which could lead to the delay in curling club activities and to ensure the plant is functional for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five curling season. And whereas Simco has provided a quote for eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars excluding H S T, travel to Hornpein for this repair alone and an estimate of approximately four to five thousand if the And an estimate of approximately four to five thousand if the club curling plant. Repair is paired with another job in the area. Therefore, be it resolved that council does hereby authorize the repair to be completed at the earliest ability provided Simcoe. Pair this job with another in the area and I apologize council for the. Ashen that out, I'm glad you have a written copy. Oh. Okay, a question about the. The motion, so. They are going to try and pair it?
Yes.
With another job?
Yes.
So that'll decrease the travel by half?
Yes, the quote.
Or the quote by half?
Yeah.
Okay, so the eighty seven hundred includes the entire amount? That with the travel and the repair?
It was, yeah, it was the travel and the most of that was just to travel to Horn County just for this repair, but it was total eighty seven hundred, that was the original quote. Okay, but once they pair it with other jobs in the area, then it will go down to approximately four to five thousand.
Okay. And do we have um? I guess we won't have any confirmation on.
I won't know till, they actually won't know until they. Figured out what jobs they're pairing together, he didn't have the, Simcoe didn't have the information for me a few weeks ago, so I'm, I. Expect to get an update soon, because they're gonna, they're gonna try to do it July. End of July, beginning of August, okay.
Any further discussions from council? Yeah, okay. And um where are we? Taking this money or did we budget for it?
Um I believe it's coming out of the, I had spoken to the acting treasurer about that, oh, there's Richard.
You have an answer, Richard?
I do, just out of regular uh maintenance on equipment uh under the curling club, so. That item might go over budget a little bit, but I think it should just be a regular budget uh expenditure.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Richard. Any further questions from council on that motion? Hey, there being none, I put it to a vote, those in favor and that is carried, none opposed. Authorized purchase of roll pro dump truck, mover and a second or please, moved by councillor Belinda Kissmaker, second by councillor Peter Kissmaker. Be resolved, the council does hereby authorize the purchase of new roll pro dump truck at three hundred and fifty seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars plus HST. And that the entire purchase be funded from a plant, the planned new long term loan. Is that it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I'd like to look for another whereas. Any further discussion on that, thanks for the short, uh Richard, you're my friend, for short, uh. I can hear you chuckling in the background.
I think, I think it was explained in in the acting treasurer's report, um and I thought all we need really is the authorization to proceed.
Okay, perfect. Any further comment, council? Those in favor and that is carried, none opposed. Item fifteen point four, rescind resolution twenty three dash zero five six sanitary sewer system exemption, moved by councillor. Belinda Kissmaker, second by councillor Peter Kissmaker, whereas at the regular meeting held on February seventh twenty twenty three, council through resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero five granted Stewart and Donna Agitch exemption from connection to the municipal sanitary sewer system. And subject to certain conditions stipulated within the resolution. And whereas the township has been since, has since been informed that Stewart and Donna Agitch would like to connect to the municipal sanitary sewer system instead. Therefore, be it resolved that council does hereby rescind resolution number twenty twenty three dash zero five six, any discussion on the motion? Go ahead, council.
Just to get it straight in my own mind, excuse me, are they tapping into the water too or just sewer?
They were originally going to tap into the water, I believe, and it was just the sewer system that they were gonna do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so now they're, they're gonna have full service.
So I deferred Eileen.
I'm not sure about the water, I just know about the sanitary sewers.
If they're gonna tie into the center, they're only gonna pay for the center, enough. Because those two separate.
Can we look up that um? Resolution?
Because that's, that would be the fair thing to do if they're gonna have their own wealth.
Yeah, I'm going completely from memory, councillor, I believe they were hooking up to the water already, like the water, drinking water. But they weren't hooking up to the sewer system. And going to have a septic field at that time, that's what we had said yes to.
The motion doesn't really indicate, it just talks about the sanitary sewer, but I'm not sure of the details about the water. Um but they're real, oh, sorry, I can see.
I was just gonna say that uh. There are separate requests for water and for sewer and they only submitted a request for the sewers, they never submitted a request.
It, it does say. Where are we? In the resolution. First comment, whereas. Request exemption from the municipal sanitary sewer system.
Yeah, exemption, yeah, where they were, yeah, it was just the.
It was just the sanitary sewer system.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on that item? Okay, those in favor and that's carried, none opposed. Fifteen point five township of Horn County business attraction and retention strategy. If I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the business attraction and retention strategy for the township of Horn County. As compared by preferred choice, DJ Lear Enterprises Limited in partnership with FBM Planning Limited. First question, is that how you pronounce that name, Lear or is it? I'm not sure.
Good enough.
Good enough, thank you, Stacy, okay, and Lear, okay. Um any discussion on um? The strategy? I do have a question, this is coming back to council again for implementation later, I think I already asked you this.
No, this is the second time it came back to council, that's already accepted it.
Yes.
So and then we brought it back again.
Did we ask you to bring it back to this meeting?
Yes, so then, yeah, in case you guys had questions, it was supposed to come last month, but it got deferred to this month. So we seen it a couple of months ago and I got deferred last month.
Yes, I'm worried. Okay, because we do have to have, we haven't had a discussion on either of these topics at council.
No, yeah.
Okay, so we need to have a discussion, council? And it's not happening tonight.
Almost.
Okay, but first of all. Or moving forward, are we hindering you at all by not having a discussion, Stacy, right? At tonight?
I've already accepted that.
Yeah.
Um the implementation of the business uh could be our name, you're not hindering me, I'm not asking for money or anything for that one.
Okay.
For in twenty twenty four, so building it. I'm not going forward with it.
That's the, that's fifteen point five you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. And then fifteen point six?
So if if council has attempted it, but you. We're not moving the implementation, then I'm not gonna put them on the website yet, not gonna release them to the public, right?
Right. Okay. Um. Well, what I'm thinking is that because they're each, I I look for direction first. Which two would be the best to pair together? Because having a discussion on three of them in one council meeting with how big our agendas are and going to be over the next three months. Do you have a suggestion on which ones to, like, I would like to divide them up into two and one?
The market gap, I'm not sure what discussion we'd have on it, that's basically uh information document.
Okay, so.
I can explain the question, but I don't think council. Review that for, that one for any information, like that could be put on the website, it's for investors to look at, it's a, it's a data basis.
It's a tool, I think so, okay, so we definitely want that up, then we don't want to hinder people. Okay?
Well, I mean, if if you were gonna pair, I would pair the first two, business traction retention and the market gap. Uh there are all three really different documents, the business traction and retention strategy is really the framework of economic development, that's kind of a big. We shouldn't be doing that all along, market gap is is a tool. For investors and for the community, they'll help people, businesses, they'll help the back end for it. And then the branding implementation um is a, is a pretty big one, that one. We need to do sooner or later because that one will need money for.
Okay, so. Uh tonight, we'll acknowledge receipt of the three documents. And bring back fifteen point seven on its own to our uh next council meeting for discussion, sorry? Oh, you'll be on vacation, okay, so the first September, okay? And um and then we can bring back the other two, I would like to bring them back before our budget meetings, so that we can have a discussion on them. Thank you for clarifying, Stacy, we could have acknowledged receipt then and put them up.
Oh, we. The second time we've acknowledged.
Okay, so we don't need to acknowledge receipt again then, if we've already acknowledged receipt?
Yep.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jen.
In theory, if council is looking at a document and there's discussion, there's supposed to be a reservation of some sort, so that there's record for the public to know why it was discussed. Um. So this either would have had to go under like information only if there was no forward discussion or because it's being brought up again. Or the second, there's, there has to be something that acknowledges that it was discussed.
Okay, um I think better than I. Say that it may be more clear for our public. That um we be it resolved. That the brand implementation plan is coming back to council on September the third or the first available meeting in September?
So then defer.
A deferral motion, but didn't we, did we defer it the last time or did we pass these motions?
I believe, I think we announced these on.
Which meeting was this at, sorry?
It was May and then it was supposed to go to June and then we had again. So May fifteenth or May first, May fifteenth.
I just have a further question.
Yeah, go ahead, Stacy.
So if we're gonna push the the branding implementation plan to September. And I do actually just do a a report with it on my ask for implementation, because. Already getting pulled up, but I can't move ahead with anything, I can't talk to the treasurer until you guys tell me something, if I'm, we're gonna push back to September, can I have a? Put another report with it for my ask for the implementation?
Yeah, definitely, more information, the better. Council, you in agreement with all of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you have any time that as uh with any of the reports, if you have. Discussions in the background, you can talk to Eileen and bring a report with the uh executive or manager recommendation, for sure. I'm just not seeing the deferral on those minutes, but.
Not on the fifth, uh they were. I was actually gonna say if it's easier for tonight, we can just do one blanket motion for all three and just say that they're received, isn't right.
Okay, would you be able to read that out then, Jen? Uh if I can get a mover and a second or please, or can we just use the one for the first one? Okay.
I'm sorry, sorry, be it resolved that council does hereby receive items fifteen point five. Business tax attraction and retention strategy, fifteen point six market gap analysis. Eighteen point seven branding and information plan for.
Okay. In favor, council?
Yes.
And that's carried. Okay, so just uh just to follow up with that, Stacy, then on September third, that's when we'll receive the report? Of what you were just talking about?
If it goes on the September third meeting, yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm actually asking you of what, like, when do you think it would be if it's?
So the only thing that don't, it'll depend on how old the meeting is, and Richard and I are both on holidays for three weeks in August.
No, September, I would say the second meeting in September, which is. September eighteenth. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, let's um move on, bylaw sixteen point one. If I can get a mover and a second or please, moved by councillor, Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty eighty five being a bylaw to enter into a municipal funding agreement with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Ama. For the Canada Community Building Fund, be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. You want to speak to this, Eileen?
Uh so it's just pretty much a renewal, we've passed it, uh we've, we've had a previous motion and I believe we just amended that and added this. This, and I'm gonna get the deputy clerk to provide more information just because she did the amendment.
So it gets passed every ten years, uh the last bylaw was technically something different, it's at the time with the federal gas tax fund. Um. So basically, it's a ten year agreement between the province or. Between the government and Ama and Ama administers. Two municipalities, so they sign the um. Administrative agreement, which is also an attachment in here. And that lasts for ten years and then municipalities sign with Ama for the uh funding agreement. So this covers us for the next ten years of the CCPI. It's just the uh funding every year.
Okay, uh a question, when did we receive? Information that we had to re- renew this ten year agreement?
Mid-June.
Whereas the information brought to council at all, that this was coming to council table? Any report?
I was, I had just, I was on vacation when this was received and then I was sick for two weeks after.
And are we meeting the deadline?
Yes, and Ama understands that it would take municipalities a while to perhaps pass a bylaws, so they're in, they understand that. It can take a municipality a little bit to get it passed and so they don't expect it to be done immediately.
And when was the deadline? Are you ceding it?
No, there's, they're not, they haven't mentioned in the information I see, there's no. Yeah, there's no official deadli- deadline, deadline. yeah, there's no official deadlet, deadline, deadline. They just advised to pass it as soon as possible.
I think from my understanding, it's just any delays in passing it is delays in municipalities getting their.
Any questions from council? Hey, there being none, I put this to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried. You know, on that, is that gonna go into our um planning document that we've asked to have made of what's coming up for councils? So to see, because now this is gonna come up in ten years. Thank you, Jen. Hey, a mover and a second here for bylaw number twenty eighty-five accountability and transparency policy. Moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty eighty-four being a bylaw to establish an accountability and transparency policy for the corporation, the township of Hornpain, be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed. Any discussion on the motion? Or in the bylaw? I have a question. How did this come about?
Uh, no, I can speak to it. This was actually, um we had a chat with the MMAH advisor a few months ago and they had they had noticed that our accountability and transparency policy policy was uh extremely outdated. It's from two thousand and eight, so it was actually um MMAH had advised us that we think we need to update our policy as soon as possible.
Okay, was this included in an uh manager's report, your CAO report that this was coming to council?
I'm not sure. I can't recall if it was or not.
And now the next step after this is the delegation authority?
The DOA, yes, we're working on that as well.
Any further questions from council? Hey, there being none, I put this bylaw to a vote. Those in favor? Not as carried, none opposed. Road maintenance policy, minimum maintenance standards. If I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty eighty-five being a bylaw to establish a road maintenance policy for the township of Hornpain been hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed. Any further discussion on the MMS? Okay, I want to thank uh those that put in comments and uh please extend my uh gratitude to municipal government wayfinders the work they did and the questions that they did answer for us at our meeting. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I put that bylaw twenty eighty-five to a uh vote. Those in favor, not as carried, none opposed. Motions, notice of motions. I don't have any right now. Adjournment, if I can get a mover in a secondary for confirmatory, moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty eighty-six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at their regular meeting held on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, be hereby read a first and second time, considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? That is carried, none opposed. Moved by councillor Peter Kissmaker, second by councillor Belinda Kissmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this meet regular meeting of council on Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four and nine twenty-three P M. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed.